For February 2nd, 2021. My name is Carrie Marneck. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board Meeting. I just need to read a brief introduction before we get started here. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the livestream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, by tuning into cable access television government channels, Verizon Channel 30 or Charter Channel 192, or by visiting the town's website and going to the Department of Cable Access Television and click "What's Playing Live." If you're on the phone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comments. I will confirm that board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by stating the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Protski?
Here.
Anthony Zaiden?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Jell Gillespie?
Here.
Okay, great. Let's see. For ground rules, I will invite each speaker on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Actually, tonight, we don't have any speakers, so I will not go through the rest of the speaker instructions. We don't have public comments, so I don't need to cover that. If technically, we don't have executive session tonight, if technical difficulties arise, I'll suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made. Any disconnections and reconnections of board members should be accurately reflected in the meeting minutes. So with that, I'd like to get started. First on our agenda, we have the continued public hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit for groundwater protection overlay district. We received an email today that was stamped by the town clerk that the applicant has requested to continue to March 2nd. At this point, this is for 425 Whitney Street. They, we are in the middle of the peer review. They requested information, the peer reviewers have requested information from the applicant that hasn't been received yet, so they weren't able to present tonight. And that's the reason why they've continued to, they'd request to continue to next month. Any questions about that?
What, what was the date they continued to?
They asked to continue to March 2nd.
Okay.
Madam Chair, there is a hand in the audience up.
Oh, is it someone that's on with the? Oh, I'm sorry. Stephen, I didn't realize you were coming tonight. I will actually bring you over. Hold on. Can you, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Kathy indicated you were just emailing.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you to the Chair, and I'll be very brief. I just wanted to clarify, we did submit the requested additional information for the peer reviewer, but we did just submit it. So hence the continuation, but we did get that information in.
Oh, okay, good. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so with that, any questions, any other questions from the board? Okay, in terms of continuing, selecting a time, we've been meeting at 6:30. If you're still on the line, Stephen, and speaking of a time, I, we could be, if 6:30 is good, or 7 o'clock? Is there a preference?
No, we don't have any preference, whatever's.
Okay.
Whatever's available.
Okay. So if we, if we continue to start at 6:30, which it sounds like we've been doing pretty consistently, so if we'd like to continue along that road for 2021, would we want to continue to 6:30 on March 2nd?
Yes. One, one of the benefits of Zoom, I guess, right? We don't have to be in traffic, so.
Perfect, yeah.
We can, we can make 6:30.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion, is that okay with the board members, 6:30, we'll get started right away? Okay, is there a motion then to continue the public hearing for 425 Whitney Street, special permit site plan approval and special permit for groundwater protection overlay district to March 2nd at 6:30 PM?
So moved?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor, I'll do a roll call vote. Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie is a nay. Okay, great. Well, continue the hearing, and thanks for joining in.
Thank you. See you in March.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, let's see. There we go. Okay, next on our agenda, we actually have the continued discussion of our zoning amendments, but what I'd like to do is take care of some business that we have to cover tonight, just so we can get that covered. Obviously, it's a small group tonight. We don't have any hearings now that the applicant for 425 has asked to continue. So my hope is that we can finish quickly and early tonight because we all made it through the long haul at the last meeting. I think we maybe set a record, I don't know. I dare say we set a record the last time. So I wanted to get some business out of the way so that we can have our conversation and wrap up. First thing I wanted to cover is the minutes from January 5th. Did everybody have a chance to read the minutes from January 5th?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any edits to the minutes?
I just had one quick one, but I just want to open it.
Sure.
Okay, I just. Let me see. I opened them already, but. Hey. Okay, that's because the wrong word. Nope. Sorry. Okay, it is on page two, three, four, or page four, under. I have to find it. It's hard because I, if it was word, I would have updated it. One, two.
Do I want to pull them up? Or are you pulling them up?
I'm pulling them up. Let's see. This is a small one. It was on page four, under use variance. On the third sentence, it says, if the use is not in the use table, it is prohibited. And I wrote it down. Let me find what I wrote, what I had said. Okay, the third sentence, if the use is not in the use table, it's prohibited. And after that, Ms. Protski, I want to add, after that sentence, Ms. Protski stated, it doesn't work that way because the ZEO can find a section to fit it under. Just that one sentence that I had said. And I don't even know if Melanie's not here, so maybe I could just forward that to Kathy and Melanie.
Okay, I think she, it looks like Melanie is here, just not on video, but we'll write it down anyway. So the sentence is. But she's, one more time, I did write it down, but. So Ms. Protski said that it doesn't work that way because the ZEO couldn't find a section to fit it under?
Because the ZEO can find a section to fit it under. You know, because, oh, I don't, won't get into it, but.
Yep.
I had a statement after, I think Kathy said if not permitted, then it's prohibited, but that's not how it's been working lately.
Okay. Any other?
And that was my only one, no.
Okay. Any other amendments? I just had two. I had right in the top and for the attendance under roll call. So there's a whole section about who attended, and then on the first page, it's member and staff roll call was taken. It's just minor. My name is just spelled incorrectly, so just to fix that from a Y to an I. And then the other thing I wanted to add for board consideration is, at the very last, on the very last page, it's, it talks about our reasons for why we declined to do the rezoning for the 37 South Street property. And it just states that we, is it on the last page? It was a comment that we didn't have time to, because of time constraints, we weren't able to address it. Let me find the right page for everybody. Let's see.
Page five, I see.
Yes, one page five, thank you. Okay.
Now that I finally got mine up.
All right, I'll share mine quickly then. Is this it? Can everybody see it? Concerning Attorney Pemper's earlier discussion?
Yep.
So it just says we didn't feel we could accommodate the request at a time because of time constraints. I just wanted to reflect that that it was not just about time constraints, that, I mean, the heart of it was time constraints, but we wanted more time to do some research and do it. We wanted to, let's see, I wrote down a little note here. We wanted to research the history, take a look at past and present zoning maps, and we wanted to take a look at the long-term picture for that area of town. So just to put a little bit more detail on why, so it just doesn't sound like we barely even talked about it when I think we spent some time discussing those reasons. I just wanted them reflected in the minutes, one way or another.
Okay.
And that's.
That's good to me.
Okay. All right, is there any other amendments?
I did not see any.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the January 5th, 2021 minutes as amended.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie is a nay. Okay, so I will, I can send those edits to Melanie and Kath, or to Kathy, so that she has them. Okay, next on our agenda is, just quickly to talk about traffic, we have CMRPC coming to our next meeting. I did have a conversation from our last meeting with Sujatha, who will come and present to us, and we talked about the format and what we wanted presented, and we talked about how to handle questions from, if we were to open it up to residents to have questions. And she said she is happy to answer questions because she's comfortable saying, when she doesn't have the answer. So she's okay with answering questions and suggested maybe we take questions in advance up to the 15th at noon. So I wanted to open that up to the board for discussion of whether or not we wanted. I mean, it could be anybody. It doesn't have, it could be other boards, committees, master plan implementation members, if they have questions, residents, if they want to submit questions in advance by that date, or did we want to open it up and have an open discussion? Any thoughts on that?
I think it would be useful to have the questions in advance because I think that we could go down a pretty long trail and maybe not get the best benefit for her time without them in advance. We left it to general audience, there's a lot that I think people would, would really want to be specific on, and they might get lost in our, in our timing.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go with that model. In terms of what we want to cover, I had on my list that we would want to hear more about, and tell me if I'm missing anything or we want to add anything. What, obviously trends in the region, what other planning boards are doing in terms of, or what could we be doing in terms of any sort of conditions or mitigation? What is the planning board's role in planning? Which sounds silly, but I think we talked about, like, Millie, you had taken on the exercise of looking at what other people are doing for transportation planning. And what do those look like? And are other planning boards creating them? Or is it something that we should be proactive about? Or what's our place in that?
Yep.
The other thing that actually Sujatha brought up, and I thought it'd be great to hear more about, is how do we balance traffic against economic development? So we need economic development, and with that comes traffic. So how do we balance the two? So that we're not always stuck in that deadlock? Any other, am I missing anything that we'd want to be covered?
I think what's important, Carrie, is to also, when she goes and does the research, is to look at the uniqueness of Northborough, how it's surrounded by the major highways. We often talk about 290 to the north, 495 to the east, and then Route 9 and Mass Pike to the south. So that's unusual. You don't find a lot of communities about that. She might find communities east here that might have like a similar layout, like being similar to that, having major highways that surround them on, on two sides or three sides. Naturally, they're going to be more denser in town, but maybe she can give some signs about what happens when you're in a community that you have a lot of major highways that surround it. Because I think that's really where a lot of your traffic is coming from.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other, did I miss anything else?
How long can we have her for?
We've scheduled an hour. And she said that her presentation, she only does a presentation for about 20 minutes or so, and then a lot of it can be answering questions, and obviously that, questions from us, or, and then whatever we want to take from, that we've received in advance.
Okay.
If we want, I, I mean, I think she could cover all of this in that time. Why, are you thinking something big, or?
I, I was just curious to how to, I mean, I think that if she's going to talk for 20 minutes and then, then we have these questions that we want to ask, and then there's questions from the public, I think that would, would be pretty full as, right, yeah.
Okay. Anything else to cover?
Can she go longer than an hour?
Yeah.
Like Millie's point, like.
Yeah, it's up to us. I mean, that night, in particular, will be very busy because we have two public hearings. We have to finish our bylaws. We're kind of under the gun on a couple of things, so. Maybe if we come down to the end and we haven't covered everything we want, we, there's some sort of follow-up we could.
Yeah.
Follow up with. So we have local planning assistant hours, assistance hours with CMRPC. And we have, I think, 16 or 18 hours accumulated, and that's from our participation in meetings and things like that. So I represent the Planning Board, and Julianne Hirsch represents the Board of Selectmen, and whenever we attend meetings, we get additional hours. So we've accumulated 18 hours, 16 to 18 hours. Kathy mentioned that she has things that she wants to allocate time to as well, but she hasn't figured out, she hasn't calculated the final amount yet, but maybe there's a way where we can work out, you know, what is Kathy hoping to use for hours? What do we need for hours? And then if there's a follow-up. I mean, there are hours to allocate. We can allocate how they want, but I think we should, you know, they're for open space, so that's probably something we want to allocate time to, things like that, so. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, and in terms of who do we think we should invite? So Kathy, or just notify, actually, just give them a notice, we're having, the, this is who we're having present. These are the topics we're covering. You feel free to submit questions by noon on the 15th. Who does this memo go to? Board of Selectmen? ZBA? Master Plan Implementation?
Yep.
Anyone else?
Well, staff, right? You're going to have DPW. Yeah. I can't think of anyone else.
Does that, when you say?
I mean, maybe Kathy would have ideas.
When you say staff, does that include, like, the, the police chief and people like that on the?
That's what I would think. Police, fire, DPW.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else on that? Oh, one other, so I'll ask about the LPA hours. And the other thing, Bob's not here tonight, but a question we had from last time, Millie, I think you asked it, is about the noise study from Amazon.
Right.
I don't know, I haven't heard anything else on that. So that's something else. Bob's obviously not here, so we can check in on that noise study too.
Okay. He said he was expecting it momentarily at that time, so.
Yep. Okay, so maybe he has it already. All right, moving right along. We, we do have an A and R for tonight, so I'm going to pull that up here. The A and R is for Zero West, oh, I can't even say, Zero West Main Street. I'm going to share the screen with you guys. Okay, can everybody see this? Kind of small. And I think everybody received a copy of this as well, correct? I think Kathy had sent out a copy of the A and R. So basically, it is just to divide into two different lots. It has the frontage, the, the area is there, the lot width. Any questions or concerns about this?
Is that Zero West Main, or?
Zero West Main.
Huh. They're always called Zero until someone builds on them, and then they get a number.
Oh, okay.
Any property, let's call it Zero Bartlett. Everything's called Zero.
Okay, all right, that makes more sense then. Okay, I'm like, what?
And typically, by the time it comes to us, staff has already looked to review that it has a proper frontage, area, and width, and that looks to be the case either way.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks good to me. One of the lots has a crazy back, but I think they're allowed to do that.
Yep.
Well, then at one point, you can stand in all three lots.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no further comments on this, then what, what I can do is sign it. We've, we voted before that one person can go in and sign it, but I would like to take a vote on our A and Rs, just to make sure. I think we're supposed to actually be voting on them for approval, but then endorsement can just be by one member of the board. So would anybody like to make a motion to approve the A and R for Zero West Main Street?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie is a nay. So I will arrange with Town Hall to go in and sign that, endorse that A and R this week.
Okay.
Okay, next, just, I think this is our last thing in old business, is just upcoming ZBA applications. Kathy had sent over ZBA, ZBA application, the only one that's out there now, is for 8 Mill Street. They, obviously, we can't discuss the plan in depth. If, if that's something we want to come before the board, we'd have to let them know if it's a site plan. I was a little bit confused because it looks like a site plan wasn't submitted, but needed to be submitted. So I don't know if anybody had a different interpretation of that, or I can.
I didn't see it.
I thought Kathy said there was no site plan with it. It's for, what, a doggy daycare?
I think it's for a kennel. I'll pull it up. So this is the, the kennel, I thought everybody received it, and I'm sorry if that was not the case. It looks like just a variant special permit and appeal, but I thought Kathy had mentioned that they were sending in a site plan. And in that case, we would be able to do a technical review if we wanted this to come before the board. We would just have to decide that.
I guess if a site plan comes forward, we can ask Kathy to bring it, or.
So I guess that's the one unclear thing here. Wait, hold on. Yeah, I'm not sure. There's a lot, a lot of things going on in this one, so I wasn't sure what was the. No site plan changes requested. Okay, so I might need clarification on this. All right, do, do, should I ask any other questions? Do any other board members have questions? Do we just need to clarify if it's a site plan associated with it?
Sure.
Okay. All righty, I'm just going to go down this list here. Oh, I do want to mention one more thing about grants. So we, did everybody receive the email from CMRPC about the streamlined way that they're doing grants now available from the state? So that's something that we may want to put on the agenda to take a closer look at, just to figure out what is the new process and how can we use it to our advantage? Because what, what they've done, it looks like, is rather than have to apply for multiple grants and use all these resources, you can, there's a whole system associated with it where you can plug in the information, and then it, it goes out into different opportunities, grant opportunities, which would be great if that's the case. And something that if, as the master plan implementation gets underway, I, there's probably numerous opportunities where grants would help progress that a little bit faster and do the things we want to get done. So I'm glad everybody got that, you know. I was going to try to attend the webinar. I think it actually, it's either tomorrow, or I missed it today, but it is available on download, and I'll forward that to the board, so everybody has it if you're interested in looking at the webinar.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, moving on to, see, we have that. Oh, any subcommittee updates? Open space? Groundwater? Amy, ground, any groundwater updates? Oh, she's frozen. I thought she was thinking she's. Anything on CPC?
Nothing since the last one.
Okay. Anything design review, Michelle?
Yes, we had an applicant come before us who was building a exuse building on Main Street. It's in a really nice design. He had to go back and make some final touches, and then he'll be done with it, and he heads off to ZBA, not the Planning Board.
Okay. Amy, it looks like we may have lost you, or you're frozen. Let's see.
Deep in thought.
Looks like you're very deep in thought. All right. If you can hear us, I don't know if you want to try to call back in. All right, she may be trying to call back in. Okay, why don't we at least get started with the bylaw discussion? That is. That is, okay, so for the bylaws that we, where we stand for bylaws, obviously, we have, I think as everybody saw, we have an extension now until the sixteenth. So it's right when our, coincides with our next planning board meeting. Um, the last time we talked, staff is going to draft bylaws to get it in near final format. The bylaws that we should have on a good track right now, in a near final format. We have, and I'm gonna stop at each one and make sure that nobody has any questions, so you're letting me join.
Come back now. I, I lost you guys.
Oops, there you are. Okay, we just kicked off the bylaw discussion. I was just gonna go through the ones that we've, the town, staff has been drafting and we anticipate should be near final. If anybody has any questions or concerns, speak now because-
Mine keeps freezing. Is it just me?
Mm-hmm.
It's just me freezing?
Yeah, do you want to try to come off of video and that may help not take as much of your, I don't know if your connection-
Okay.
Right, how's that?
I might move into another room. No, I'm in the same room I'm always in, but when you're talking, Carrie, I keep getting, you keep freezing.
Amy, I just disconnected as well. Um, I believe we're still live streaming to YouTube, but, um, I'm not sure, maybe it might be a Zoom issue. Um, not too positive on that.
Okay. Do, do you see freezing? Do you guys see Carrie freezing or no?
Nope.
Not now, but during the meeting.
No.
I haven't had that issue.
Oh, okay. I might move into another room, see if I don't disconnect, but, but every other, like, sentence when Carrie's speaking is freezing on my computer.
Okay, so let us know. Well, I'll stop after each one anyway, so we'll know if you can hear us. And these are the quick ones because we've already pretty much should be at the end of it. So first, we had accessory dwelling. Any comments, concerns, thoughts on that? Okay, next, it's be, that should be drafted at this point is the duplex special permit that's streamlining it to one board. Any comments, questions, thoughts? Amy, are you still there?
I'm still here. I'm just moving to my computer.
Okay, um, craft breweries should be drafted at this point. Any comments, questions, concerns? Amy, anything from you on craft breweries?
No, but we haven't seen any of these, right? I haven't received any from Kathy.
No, I haven't either. Nope.
Okay.
And I thought on craft breweries, she was gonna be getting back to us on some of the outstanding information. Like from the alcohol, council and I think water usage, things like that.
Okay.
That's right. We have ZBA questions when we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, did, did, were they drafting something anyway? For some reason, I had them on my list that they were trying to draft it to start. We narrowed down the definitions.
I'm sorry, what was your question? Was ZBA drafting it or was staff-
No, no, was, did Kathy start to draft that?
Yeah, that was on her list to draft on some of the concerns about liquor licenses, um, water usage and stuff like that, that she was either going to go off and check or check with legal counsel.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or check with whomever were the authorities with regards to the liquor licenses.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so under draft, but we have alcohol license, water usage. What was the third one?
I don't know if there was a traffic concerns or something on that. I can't remember on that one.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then, uh, the other one that I had as being drafted was commercial storage facility. Any last thoughts on that? Okay, so those should be underway, perhaps a few outstanding items on craft breweries. The next batch is, um, requiring information back from town council. That was the non-conforming one. So that one, before we can proceed, requires input back. So I don't think there's anything we can cover at this point without having that information. It was a bit of a roadblock. Any thoughts on that? Okay, so we need information on that. The, the last three I have is needing to be discussed further is prohibited uses, groundwater and contractor's yard. So why don't we start with prohibited uses? Because for that one, I believe we just wanted to narrow down the list a little bit. And then it could be drafted.
Okay, I'll share my screen.
Okay.
Okay, do you see it?
Yep. So I think previously, we had suggested as a starting point going through M. Is that right? Amy, do you remember?
I would go through N because we don't have storage and sale of building and junk materials. So I'd go through N at least.
The only thing I would suggest is, don't you have, um, a couple places in town that have, they sell like used products, you know, like some more salvageable products is one that's right down near, uh, St. Bernadette's, right over there. Is that, would that be considered junk materials?
Wait, that's like an antique store, the one with the Northborough, with the oil company next to it?
Right, I mean, he does have some things outside that might be considered. I mean, how do you define, what do you define as junk materials is what I'm saying.
I did see in some other towns, a definition for junk, so I can put that out, but I didn't, I picture him, I'd have to look up what he does, but I thought he was like an antique store. Like, we do have antique shops too.
Right, but I think you'd probably want to define just some of that, what that means, right?
Okay. I can look up a definition for junk.
The only thing I was thinking.
Yep. All right, I'll do that for the next meeting or we can ask Kathy too. Send a note to Kathy and Bob to see if they have anything, definition for junk.
Yeah.
I think there are a couple yards that they've shut down because they're full of junk, so. Okay. Is there anything else anybody wanted to add? This is just a list I had from two towns that had the prohibited uses.
The one question I think came up before of what is a fur bearing animal?
Yeah.
I mean, is it, is it-
Right. I guess we can ask, um, that to Kathy and Bob too, because that's something that goes back, like she said. The raising and breeding of fur bearing animals goes back away, so we can ask what was meant by that.
Is that like, I don't know, I don't even know, is, I don't wanna say-
Right.
Like, for example, animals. Well, I'm thinking it's animals that you would make clothes or coats with or something like that, but I don't know.
I could try to look into that. I bet there's something online about what that is.
Hmm, yeah, let's see.
I mean, otherwise, there's nothing on here pri- prior to that that I think we'd want.
I agree.
We have a couple other prohibited uses and wonder if you add it to the list, like Kathy had told me a couple times that self-storage units are now prohibited in town. So do we add self-storage units to the list?
Self-storage units?
It's come up. Yep, like at one Lyman Street, they asked for use variance, not the last application, but like two applications ago. They asked for an application for self-storage units and we have a whole bunch of them in town. And Kathy has told me twice that those are now prohibited in town. Because she, they had gone through them and said there were so many of them. We can clarify it with her next week, but she's told me that a couple times.
I guess if it's prohibited, where is that stated? Is it in the bylaws or?
I think it's defined for them and then they just don't have it in the use table.
So I think that's worthwhile asking staff about.
Yeah.
You're prohibiting something that you have all over town, unless you want to start to eliminate them.
No, but they're already prohibited, she said, but we can run it by her.
Yep.
That was just my question. If we have other things that are already prohibited, should we just add them to the list?
Um, okay, so it sounds like we would just want a little clarification on fur bearing animals. What is junk? And what happens to stuff like, that's already prohibited?
Okay. Do we feel all set with this one?
But, and what is after, so obviously, we already have billboards. What about the, what an automa- automobile stored as a principal use? What is, what is that?
We have a couple of those already. There's a Lexus dealership, well, I don't know, then vehicle storage yard, that might be the Lexus up by, um, Walmart.
All right, we may not have to drill down that far, I was just curious.
Right.
It's worth asking though, I mean, so you, I think you're saying you want to take that off of the list or, and if we had it on the list, how would it, uh, if it would at all affect the two storage lots that we have in town?
Right. We could add that to the list. Maybe we should send an email to Ca- Kathy with these questions, so she can review them before our next meeting.
Sure, okay, I wrote down, um, what I mentioned before, plus the vehicle storage yard. And then otherwise, any concerns with through, up through, I guess, um, outside of the ones we were questions for, up through lumber mills? I mean, I think that's pretty black and white. Does anybody see any issues? Okay. Okay. All right, so we got that one narrowed down a little bit. With some questions there. Um, and Amy, anything else on that one?
No.
Okay, okay, so let's move on to the groundwater one. So the last we talked, um, we had, I presented two different options for this one. And what prompted this in the first place, and I think the whole point of it, it is to make it so that it's clear that there's not two different ways to get a special permit because there shouldn't be two different ways to get a special permit. And what I was saying last time is that even in our memo from town council, one thing he had said was there shouldn't be two different ways to get a special permit. I, I think that if it's perceived that way, it causes a problem because then it, it's confusing to everybody and it also leads people to say, well, if I don't want that path, I'll just go down this path because I think it's easier for whatever reason. And that's not really the point of special permits in, in my mind, or I think um, the way it's, the law is generally set up. So I'm gonna show you two different, the two different options that I presented in the past. Let's see. I think I combined them, so we don't have to do a whole, okay. So I, I presented two different options to date. One is more of a direct option. Both of them have this piece, which is really just pulling, this is the part that it moves it from another bullet, which it didn't make sense there. Because if you're, if you look at the bylaw, and I put the page here for everybody wants to open their book, it didn't make sense in its current location because it was stuffed in with a bullet about how to file with the town clerk. So that didn't really make sense because it was talking about making the determination for the special permit and what you should consider. So I thought that was out of place. Both options, and, and by the way, you don't have to pick, if the board doesn't want either option, that's an option too. So I'm just presenting it the two ways I've shared it. If, um, that's, so I've left that in both areas. This is actually the change that staff wanted. It's unrelated. I'm gonna delete that while we're live here because it's not, I want us to focus on the right data. This was a clerical error. I'm just gonna delete that for now too and just focus right here on the two. The pieces that are different, I've presented two different ways to tie it to, um, a bit more of a special permit. One is just a direct tie, which would mirror all the other overlay districts. And one is more just language, and this doesn't have to be the final language, but language that makes it clear that you have to, the benefits have to outweigh the impact in one way or another. So it's just adding some sort of clarity there. My concern with the way that it's listed now, if you go back and read the bylaw for groundwater, I'm not gonna read it to you, don't worry. I'm just looking at it. Is that it's very focused on the groundwater advisory committee. And if it is perceived as a separate path, what we've inadvertently done is carved out a, its own little special permit where it's, you're relying on the groundwater advisory committee, which in terms of, let's see, I want to be careful how I say this. It, it's really not a committee of groundwater experts. It's a committee of different representatives, which is great and, and Amy, I want you to know, I think you do, you're very smart, you do a ton of great research, but I think you've said before, you're not a groundwater expert.
Right.
If Fred's really the only expert on that committee, I just want to be careful about carving out this separate little component when then you're really, that committee's not really authorized to be a special permit granting authority. It's the planning board. So that's what I just want to be careful about. And why I wanted to pay attention to this. Now, like I said at the last meeting, i- in the end, it doesn't matter a whole lot for us. Most of our, all of our groundwater special permits are, were industrial and duplex, so they're all special permits anyway. But to have two different paths in the bylaws is what doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah.
And one thing I just wanted to share, um, and it, I, I took out the, um, reference to the application because I don't, I don't want to point out any, anyone specific, oh my goodness, where did I put it? And, and this is really what kicked it off a little bit for me, that made sense to me. It's when, it was, in one of the memos that were received, that, that made it clear to us that to adopt this position, so, so that you, to adopt this position would mean that no development project in Northborough would be subject to the well-established multi-factor inquiry to determine whether the adverse effects will not outweigh its beneficial impact, so long as you need a different distinct special permit that even had slightly different criteria, varying criteria. So the general special permit approval criteria would be rendered superfluous and this isn't how the bylaw should be read. So that's something that just made, and up here it just says, how can that operate to nullify the general criteria? It, it came across as nonsensical. So that's where it started for me. That's, those are the different paths I tried to take. Any comments or thoughts or?
No, I think both, which way do you think is better? Because you've done all the research on this. They both sound good to me.
I, I mean, I personally think just going direct is the way to go because it matches the, um, so this is what we do for all the other overlay districts. It sets a direct tie.
Yep. So then we should keep it the same.
So Carrie?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, so can you talk to staff's feedback? They gave us on December sixteenth, staff's feedback for each one of these. Can you talk to where they described their feedback for you on groundwater?
Sure, did they, hold on, let me see. Do you have that handy?
I thought this was it.
Let me see.
So it said, "Staff has reviewed the following draft proposal from members of the planning board and we offer the following comments for the board's consideration." So I just want since staff is not here tonight, so us to be able to go back and say, okay, here's what we agree with, but here's what you said, and this is why we think.
Yeah.
So do you have that? Do you want to look it up on the?
I'm trying to find it now. You don't have it on your computer, do you, to share? Or is it just a hard copy?
Well, I wouldn't know how to share it, but if you go all the way back to December 16. Uh, let's see. I mean, you want to walk me through the sharing process? I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, if you just go to, if it's on your computer, just see the share screen button. It's green at the bottom of the.
Yeah, hold on for a second. Because that way we can say we took into consideration their feedback, right?
Sure, yeah. So do you see that green button at the bottom that says share screen?
Okay, hold on for a second.
While she's doing that, I just know from being on the groundwater committee, we never discuss the bylaws. We just we get a letter from Fred and we go through the checklist on is there a container? Did Fred check the numbers? And I know sometimes listening to some of the ZBA meetings or even the planning board meetings, it it comes across that well, the ZB, the groundwater or the experts and and they said it's okay. But even during one of the meetings, one of the longstanding members said, we just advise that if the special permit board, you know, thinks it's the right way to go, then this system should work, but we're not approving anything. You know, and when I first joined groundwater committee, I asked a person who was leaving groundwater committee, and I said, how was it? And she's like, I had no idea. We just do what Fred says, you know, so but sometimes I go to the meetings and they say, well, we have to say yes, because they're the experts. But I also looked up other towns, and I couldn't find any other town with a groundwater committee. The groundwater special permits always fell with the planning board.
We have success. Thanks, Amy. That's helpful.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I'm going to have to go down to the next one, the next page. Can you see where it says groundwater?
Yeah, it's just a little small.
Oh. Hold on.
Michelle, this will be a whole new world for you.
I know.
Woo.
There we go. I found a button here. I like. There you go.
Just think how much. Is it's nothing against, because I think it knows stuff, and I think it's great. But I think for it to come in front of the board, the board should still consider all the criteria, too.
Oh, I remember their feedback now. Okay.
Okay, so I think it's worthwhile to say we read your feedback, we understand it, and you know, with your argument or what you're suggesting that we do, it's sort of like they're saying they 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 disagree, but I think it's important as we give feedback to them why we think it's different.
Yeah, so so for this one, what I I thought about this, and I think because then I went that I remember this meeting and I went back and I said, well, that does I hear what they're saying. So I went back and I looked at it. But then what I noticed was the other ground overlay, I'm sorry, the other overlay districts also tied back to the the general special permit criteria, and they had the same problems, specifically the floodplain overlay district. What does traffic have to do with floodplain overlay district, right? So I think in that case is like we've always done, we just say it's applicable. If there's anything not applicable to, you know, whatever we're looking at, whether it's we never see the floodplain overlay districts. I don't I don't I don't remember seeing one. But for anything that comes to us like that, we would just say it's not applicable versus not have the opportunity to somehow tie it together with our general core special permit criteria. I did actually send my information to Fred at one point and asked if he wanted to share it with groundwater. I'm not sure groundwater ever met after that point. Amy, have you met in a while?
No, we haven't met in a while.
Okay, so I did submit it for groundwater advisory committee to review, and I don't think they've met to discuss. So, I mean, again, I'm not it's up to the board. It's a if if nobody's comfortable with it, that's fine. It's not. I'm not looking to die on the mountain over it. I just wanted to point out as something that doesn't make sense to have two different approaches to it. So you guys tell me what you're comfortable with, not comfortable with. I mean, the other thing that I think we've been making our decisions a certain way for a long time and you know, we want to make it clear that's the way we do things, not have two different ways to to get a special permit or, you know, we don't want two different definitions for things. We don't want two ways to get a special permit for things. It's just confusing for people.
Yeah. And we went through a whole list of other special permits with the groundwater, and they all went down the special permit criteria. The previous ones.
So I don't know. Any discussion?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I feel like I think doing the more direct approach so that there isn't the duplication, but also taking out, you know, just saying where it does not apply in in whatever criteria that just really doesn't apply, like you said, traffic may not apply.
Right. So then we just say in our findings, so what we would do in our findings is just say not applicable.
Not applicable.
Anthony, you've been quiet. Anything from you?
No, I just think make it, you know, the more direct route, more cut and dry.
And one more comment Bob made last time. He was worried about it being more work. I don't see how it'd be more work. I don't know if anybody else can see how it'd be more work. It's I don't. There's no additional application. It's all the same process. It's always been. And anybody see how it'd be more work?
I mean, I agree with you. You're trying to eliminate duplication. So I think if we agree as a board, then we should probably go forward and then see what I mean, did we just go? I don't think the ZBA had any feedback on this, did they?
No, they didn't know how to solve it either.
They didn't know how to solve it, but they agree that there was duplication, correct, or?
It sounded like Fran. I'd have to go back, but I thought Fran verbalized it actually. She summarized it in a nice way, like how do we not create this separate, what appears to be a separate special permit process?
Yeah.
Well, it's not unusual when you do a major rezoning like we did several years ago, that after several years, you'll find that there is some duplication going on and that you'd like to make things a little more clear and concise. So I don't sit on the groundwater committee. I you're more familiar with it, Carrie, and so is an Amy. So.
I don't think it will affect the groundwater committee at all.
Yeah, I don't want the message to be it's, you know, I don't want a bad message to come across to them. I just think it's cleaning things up.
I don't think it will change the way anything happens at the groundwater committee. Because they're not going to go through the special permit criteria. And we will never really read allow the groundwater criteria either.
So wait, you never as part of the application review, you never reviewed that criteria anyway?
I would have to go back and check, but you know, we when Jason and I joined at the same time, and there were never really any instructions when we joined the board, and we just jumped right into an application. And for most of them, we talk about storage of hazardous materials, and then we approve if it meets the impervious numbers. But I don't remember ever talking about this, the criteria in the zoning. And once I brought up about how something wasn't allowing groundwater one, and I was talking about the zoning bylaws, and everybody was like, what are you talking about? And I said, well, and this was when we were in person. I said, well, it's written right here in our zoning bylaw book, and I passed it around. I don't even know if the groundwater committee has a copy of the zoning bylaws. We just, when we meet, we get Fred's input on the application at hand, and then we talk about whether we would like to hear more input. And we get and then if we have all the input that Fred needs with his memo, they just take a vote that you know, everything looks good to them. But we never really even checked the impervious numbers. We just, we go through Fred's memo and we ask questions of the applicant, but we never talked about the zoning bylaws, definitely.
Okay. I want to make sure we leave enough time. My goal is still to end at eight o'clock, so I don't want to belabor it too much. Is there anything else on this?
No, but we have to pick which one, the first one or the second one, or did everybody agree with the first one?
So Michelle, if you stop sharing.
Okay.
So now you should see up in the top of your screen. It's is there a stop sharing red button at the top?
Hold on. Here we go. This is so exciting. Okay. I think I stopped. Did that stop sharing?
No, do try it again.
Okay, hold on. Okay.
There you go. There you go.
Good.
Wow. Did we? So do you want me to pull up my? So I either have the direct option, which is this similar language to the other ones, or the more indirect, which just adds some sort of buffer language, I guess, but you should. Do I need to pull that back up? Or are we comfortable with the direct version?
I'm comfortable with that.
Me too.
Yep.
Okay, last I have here contractors yard.
Yeah, and I'll pull mine out. I had so many iterations that over the last two weeks, I just tried to after talking quickly with the ZBI, I tried to come up with the definition. And I actually wrote the bylaw if Kathy wanted to use it. So it was just updating the contractors yard. Again, I don't feel that there should be wholesale sales within a contractor's yard because a contractor yard is they have a service. And they provide services, but not usually the wholesale of products. And we already have definitions in our bylaw for wholesale and retail sales. And I felt like the current use table combines contractors yard and lumber yard, and they have different elements and uses, and it makes it confusing. And even during ZBA meetings, a couple of times, Bob and the ZBA thought it was confusing. Lumber is a wholesale trade and is included in other definitions. So it was probably an old definition from a long time ago to include a lumber yard with a contractor's yard.
Yep.
So for contractor's yard, I tried to sum it up that it's a yard, including an administrative office and structures used by the builder, contractor, subcontractor, landscaper, tradesman, or a similar business dedicated to the storage of their vehicles, equipment, machinery, tools, materials, and fabrications. And then the next section was already part of our definition that you provide all operations shall be confined to the premises. And I took out the word disturbing dust because is it? Do we have a definition for what's the difference between dust and disturbing dust? The other bylaws that I looked at that talked about this, it never said disturbing dust. So how do you go about and say, well, that dust is disturbing, but that dust isn't disturbing? So I took that out. And then I added all outside storage and parking of trucks and equipment and dumpsters shall be screened from view from the street and abutting properties by attractive fences or plantings in perpetuity. Storage of salvage materials is prohibited. And this last, the second to last sentence was actually in the 2009 bylaws, so and it's something that I see in a lot of other towns because when it goes to different boards, whether it's the ZB or the planning board, we always have to add it as a condition, and the ZBA even always adds it, whether they use landscaping or fencing, they always want to screen it from view. Instead of adding it as a condition every single time, it might as well just be part of the definition. So on the second page, I just showed we have commercial greenhouses wholesale trade and sale of grain, lumber, or construction supplies already in our bylaws. So what I just did was I separated it out. I don't know if that definition sounds good to people. I actually I looked a lot of definitions and I tried to make it easy to read and easy to interpret, interpret, whether it's by a board or by the zoning enforcement officer. I just wanted it not to be vague anymore and and I could send it out to everybody for next.
I have a question.
Sure.
So wait, I'm just reading this. Yards including da da da. Provided that all operations shall be as to combine, provided that all operations shall be such as to confined to the premises. Dust, noise, odors, other objectional effects. What does that mean? Can that it also is confined?
Well, that was part of our old definition, and that's actually part of our performance standards. So I reached out to Bob and Kathy today and asked, you know, about our different, we have two different areas in the zoning bylaw that talks about this. And I don't even know if it has to be included in our definition. But it was in the old definition, which is why I left it because I once I brought up taking it out. And then we had said, well, no, maybe we should just leave it.
No, I don't mind it being in there, but is there like a word missing, or am I not reading it correctly?
I think what you're confused on is that that it when it says confined to the premises, what that means is that all of those should be are allowable as long as they're only confined to the.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a confusing way to word it because I was I was thinking about, but I didn't know how to change it. So that means you can have dust as long as it's not blowing on your neighbor's house. And then when you go to the performance standards, that must set like the noise. But the question that I forwarded to Bob and Kathy, when you go to performance standards, it only talks about industrial districts and industrial uses. So I I asked them a question, why isn't it in all districts? Because now we have home occupations. We have uses in the business district that could also have objective effects, which should have performance standards, too. So I know Kathy and Bob aren't here tonight, and I I'll bring it up at the next meeting with them once they have a chance to look at it. But that was another change. I was thinking of bringing forward for town meeting like I would think the performance standards would have to be in all districts, not just in industrial districts. Because if there was something that was offensive downtown, you would want to be able to enforce the performance standards.
Right.
Yeah, but that is so subjective, Amy. I mean, it's like you have to think about like, I I understand what you're saying, but how would you even like try to control that? Like, what is what is considered to be one not good smelling odor to one person is not the same to another, right? Or noise level. It's got to be. I mean, that's going to be further discussion down the line because that's like sort of there's got to. There's got to be a reason why. And this is why it would be good to have Bob involved. Like, what does he get for complaints? With regards to any of these things like noise or dust or odors and stuff like that, right?
But wait, these are in the current definition.
Yeah, we already have them in the current definition.
Right.
I only I only changed what I crossed out and underlined, so it's in the current definition. And we also already have performance standards.
Okay, so anything not crossed out or underlined is already in there now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So Amy, I just have a question.
Sure.
I agree with you that it's good to be screened from the view of the street with attractive fences and plantings.
Yep.
In perpetuity, I agree with that. But on abutting properties, what if you have a property that's elevation is higher? So then they look down on it. How would you then be able to screen that? So then they look down on it. How would you then be able to screen that?
I took it from other bylaws, I mean. So you're saying that someone is up higher?
Yeah, yeah. What if you have like a road that is behind um, like West Main Street? Where the properties would look down onto it.
Yeah, I don't, they'd probably say something like, like when you looked at fifty Southwest, when there was a berm in the front. Or the, or was higher, you know, they took into account different heights, like I would think they would say that. The hill in the back. Back is part of the, you know, of the, the blocking of the, the view. I mean, you wanna, what if they're all the same levels, like? Are there any examples where something's that much higher?
No, I was just curious when I thought, I can see at street level, I just look at a budding properties where there's elevations are different. Um, the other thing I had, just because this sort of um, how we started with the conversation on this is. With regards to a landscaper and you said that you don't want to see like, and even the small contractors, we don't want to see like, um. You know, retail sales, wholesale. If a, if a landscaper wants to sell something, would you say they're not in contractor's yard? They would be in a commercial greenhouse, or where would you put them elsewhere?
Well, what would a landscaper usually sell? Like the landscapers. Their maintenance and they buy their plants at Lake Bagalos or. I don't know of any landscaper in town that actually has a yard where they're selling product.
Right, but maybe they want to expand on their business.
Then they could probably ask for an accessory use to sell something. But I would think if their business is going out and. And the maintenance and upkeep of people's yards, they're not gonna have someone in their yard selling anything. Like from all the landscapers I can think of that come around my neighborhood. I don't think they have yards where they're selling products.
No, but I'm just saying if they wanted to expand their business. The other thing is, what if you were to have like, let's, maybe that was not a good, um, because I'm just looking at the ones that you listed as tradesmen. What if you had a carpenter or plumbers or mason who had some of their products? That they um, had their products in the shop and they, you know, what about that? Do you not think they should be able to sell the products in the shop, or it should just be, the shop only should be used for their. Um, you know, for their vehicles, their tools for storage, an office, for an office worker. Um, they would have to find another way to do that, right?
Yeah, but do you know any in town? Town either, like I know plumbing supply, people that sell plumbing supply, but I have had a lot of plumbers come to my house and. And, but they're not selling things at their house, like they're out on the job.
Yeah, I know, but with zoning, you always want to look, look out to how people might expand and grow their business and not be. So your narrative doesn't want to be so narrowly focused that you're not, you're prohibiting the growth of their business.
Right, I just can't think of an example of anyone doing it, like they could have a retail sales. Door and then be a contractor and go out and like a plumber might only have one van, so they could be a retail sales store. And be a plumber on the side.
Yeah, so the only question I would ask on this from Bob is. What we've listed as the tradesmen around here, you know, we've listed four types of them. Someone came and, and, but you've taken out the, the retail part of it. We would say to Bob, well, if someone wanted to do that, how, how would that fit in and, and would that be a prohibitive use for them? That's would be my only question.
Yeah, I just want an example of it. I can't think of anyone that I know that are tradespeople. That are actually selling, that would have a shop where they're selling things. Like, I think Millie even went and asked the person, the, the kitchen contractor people. And they have a shop where they're selling kit cabinets or granite. And then they send someone out to do the install, but it's not a contractor yard that. That they're storing all their trucks and.
Well, I could see someone, for example, let's say a granite guy, right? He's got granite on display there, so he's got his building materials, he's got his trucks there. And he also has his installers there. They'll look at the granite, they might pick it out, he's got his building materials inside there, he's got a couple of trucks he uses inside there. And then he's got some office staff, so that's sort of like a small business owner who's in the trades who. I would even think it'd be great if an electrician, you know, at, had electrical place and then had some lighting things, I mean, they may not want to do it, but. You never know, but I think the granite guy is a good example of that. Mason might be, I don't know if you'd use a mason, but. Um, anyone who does hardscapes, you know, that's becoming a popular trending thing. And there is a hardscape business up by Wegmans. Like, um, you know, he would have that, building materials would be inside, you know, his stones and his bricks and stuff like that.
Right, that's more like wholesale or a sale of grain, lumber and construction or garden supplies. Like, we already have that in our definitions, it's a business establishment engaged in the sale of grain, lumber, garden supplies. Construction products and they include inside and outside.
Yeah, I just didn't want to be, like, we talk a lot, not to use it a lot, that unintended consequences, if, if Bob Federico could look at this and say. Yep, you know, on these most frequent people that you mentioned, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, you know, masons, landscapers. If they wanted to do that, yeah, I, I think we could find another way to fit it in or something, or I would add this language for that. That's all, that's all I was thinking about.
Bob just allowed a granite person in three twenty-nine West Main Street and he called them retail sales. They said that they have a shop where they're gonna have granite on the inside and they're gonna have like. A couple samples inside and then they'll have some slabs in the back of the building. So people come into their retail shop. And, and they pick out the slabs that they want and he orders it from a wholesaler. Who delivers it once a week to their building and then they just go out and deliver it and install it.
So do you, do you think that's bad or good, or?
No, I mean, that's fine, that's retail, he said, but that's, but contractor yards and like, the, the contractor yards like. Like if you talk to Dave Varon, their yards where it's mostly like equipment and maybe they store like. That's why there's structures here, because a plumber could store all the piping that they use when they go to their jobs. And they could st- store their stone. But, but none of those contractors are, are selling products. Cause they're out busy doing the jobs, like they're two separate things, like, just like Carrie said with the, um. The groundwater, you shouldn't have two definitions that can do. The same thing, you shouldn't have two different ways of going about it, like we have wholesale trade. So that person could be, if they want to go into business for selling all the products, they could be wholesale trade and then. Have an accessory use of being a contractor. Like you shouldn't have two ways of doing it, because then. That's how it gets tricky, because now these retail people are, are, that are on our business and on our main street. Will have two different ways of looking at and say, well, you know, maybe I'm not retail anymore, maybe I'm a contractor yard. And I want to start storing all this equipment. And, and if you read our community development plan and our master plan. Our downtown and our main streets, they wanted to move away from trucks and, and storage yards. It was supposed to.
I, I, we've heard it like, I get it, it's only a question I had for Bob Federico, that's all.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yep, so I just wanted to try to make it easy and I'll send it out to everybody. But when I was going through this too, I looked at wholesale trade and it was something that struck. Me, that was the same as commercial storage, I just want to share one thing. This was another bylaw that hit me when I was trying to go through and make sense of all these, because. Contractor yard was falling into like three different definitions. So wholesale trade like commercial storage facility has to do with warehouse and distribution. So the definition of wholesale trade is a business for the sale of commodities and quantity for processing. Including associated warehouse and outdoor storage and distribution facilities. Now, if you read processing warehouse and distribution facilities, those are, those are activities. That we do in the industrial district. So, so after actually reading this, I feel like wholesale trade. Like commercial storage facility should actually not even be in business west and business south, it should be in highway business and industrial. Because these are industrial uses. So it was another thing I wanted to bring up, it, it was similar to um, the commercial storage. We have, we have so many um, complaints, whether it was during the master plan or recent of warehouses, distribution. And facilities, those are industrial uses and um, they um, were recommended to take them out of our main streets. It was not a recommendation back to the community development plan in two thousand and three. But some of those were never followed up on, so I was, that's what I was trying to do.
So it sounds like the remaining question is for Bob to take a look at. In the cases where you have your, like the granite person, the tradesman, the. The carpenter, the landscaper, the, will this prevent them from doing what they need to do?
Right, they're contractors, they're not sales. If they want to be into sales, then you can all, there's retail sales, we allow retail stores. We allow wholesale.
So does retail sales cover what they're, if they choose to grow, does retail sales cover them? Is that your question, Michelle? Yes, I think.
But I just don't know, their towns, in other towns or even in North Row. Could you have two or three businesses on your yard, like you usually have to pick a principal? And then an accessory use, so if you were gonna be a contractor. Or are you gonna do sales, which one's your principal and which one's your accessory? That's usually how we go through it.
Okay, so if you wanted to go to retail, could you get a special permit for an accessory use?
Right, and well, I, I think you would as yourself, if you were your own contractor, but then you can probably have only so many trucks. I think you have to pick the other and that's where this is getting confusing. And that's why it's confusing when it comes in front of the ZBA and even Bob says it is, because. In our definition. I have to go back to the other one, it was, you're including a lumber yard and a contractor yard and they're merging those two together.
Okay, so did I capture all the questions that we have for this one?
For the contractor yard?
Yes.
Yep, but I also wanted to run wholesale trade by everybody. While we were doing commercial um, storage facility, wholesale trade is very similar, so I wanted to add it in.
Okay, do you have something for that?
Yep, this, oh, is, am I not sharing it? I have it up on my screen. I thought I was sharing it, I'm getting all confused, sorry. I wasn't looking at it. Wait a second, and I, when I look at it, when I click share screen, I didn't see it. Okay, here it is, I thought I was showing it, sorry. Can you see it now? Okay, so this is wholesale trade. And when you look at the definition, and here I was pointing it out, I thought I was showing it. When it talks about processing warehouses and distribution facilities, those are items that. We find in our industrial zone. But they're still in business west, business south. So I wanted to ask it or bring up if we could.
Huh, that's really interesting.
Of wholesale trades of. Someone who's doing it.
So, so literally this could mean a warehouse in business west?
Right. Warehouse with distribution, so it could be a warehouse full of. A commodity. With the distribution and to me, I mean, it goes along with everything we have in industrial. It doesn't, it doesn't fall into, if you read the community development plan, what. They were looking for on the ma- main street and in the business districts. So I just wanted to send it out.
Okay, any thoughts on this?
Do we have any applicants or any um, businesses currently in those two? Or those four areas that would be. Uh, then out of compliance, if we change that, do we, are there any examples?
You'd have to ask, I think we'd have to ask Kathy and Bob and I can forward it to them and ask them, but even if we did. They would be grandfathered and we would never shut, you know, we wouldn't shut them down because they could keep working, but do we want to add more?
So many of our definitions overlap.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and I don't know why. Cause even the contractor yard talked about sale of lumber and then we have a business use sale of lumber, grain. In construction, so that's why I didn't think we needed in the contractor yard anymore. And I didn't find other contractors yard that do sales.
Just trying to think if there's any other of those businesses that would be under wholesale trade. Look at that up.
Probably the one that Michelle just mentioned near Wegmans. But that is actually industrial with the commercial overlay, so that would still be allowed there. Even with the change, it would still be allowed there. Because we still, it's still an industrial district over there by Wegmans, that never was changed. And it's right near the highway there and it's okay, but do we want to, like now we have dentist office going in over there and we have. You know. There are businesses. You know, there, there, it's a commercial area with stores and. Do we even really need like wholesale trade up and down main street or even over there? Even though it would be allowed because it's industrial over there, so I guess I'm just, when I read that definition. Processing warehouse and distribution facilities stood out because those are things we talk about when we talk about the industrial districts. And I know we were trying to move main street away from an industrial type of area. Cause you're never gonna get the pedestrian friendly area that they talk about with the master plan and community development plan. If we keep adding in trucking and warehouses.
Yeah, I mean, if we can squeeze it in, I, I think it all ties into the same problem that we're trying to solve. So it'd be silly to solve one problem and not the other problem, I don't know how other board members feel. I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to really do a look through and make sure all of our loops still tie together with. You know, once you start digging, you always find another blip, but.
I think eventually, like Framingham and Midway, we should just do an overhaul of all the bylaws, you know? This is what our master plan says, this is what our community development plan said, and this is the look. And the feel of the community we're going for and what do we have to do?
Okay, so you keep on referencing the community development plan that was like practically like twenty years ago. Community development plan spun off on the master plan, which you just finished. So I think a lot of this stuff, I, you know, that we talked about relooking through and maybe tweaking some of the zoning again. I don't mind doing some of this, but I feel like it coming up against like the, we're supposed to have everything in right now and we're doing, we're adding things on and adding things on. And we don't know, with zoning, there's a connectivity to it, so I'd rather feel more comfortable about at least making sure with staff. If they say, oh, yeah, you know, we can add that on and we don't think we'd have any, you know, you're not gonna impact anything else. Or, you know, a lot of times in staff's input, they've, they've requested and other boards have requested. To, not to slow things down, but the master plan implementation committee is gonna start addressing it, so. My only thing is, is that I, I agree with some of the discussion you have and I just don't know what we're doing tonight, we keep on adding things on.
Well, this is the only one I added. And um. I only did it because.
The board if we can just um, take all down, take. Can I just ask the board if we can just um take all down, take, obviously the staff will watch the video. And watch our feedback and then ask them for the feedback from them for next staff meeting.
I guess my main thing is the master plan implementation is gonna. Way, at least the way they talked, it's gonna go through a downtown visualization. And it's gonna take years while things are popping up here and there and everywhere. And the community development plan was done in two thousand and three, which led to the bylaw changes in two thousand and nine. And I read the minutes from that and Rick Leaf said if there's anything we missed, you know, or anything that's not working. We should go back and fix it. So I'm looking at the present. And warehousing and distribution and it was listed in the community development plan to. Remove it from the main drag there from Shuseberry to Marlboro. But it's still there. There were a couple of things that may have been overlooked. And and I know the master plan implementation committee is coming, but in the meantime. Um, I was even gonna go through for the next meeting and read all the comments from the master plan. I don't think. Trucking, distribution and warehouses are what the residents wanted to see on Main Street.
Okay, so it sounds like. Um, Michelle's just requesting, at least this is the first time we're seeing it, so maybe with feedback from staff. And then um, the, it sounds like the point of this is really as you were looking at the contractor's yard, it it. Stood out to you that this was sort of a bit of a loophole in putting warehouses. In sections we don't necessarily want to see them. Looks like Business West doesn't know and Business South, so. Does this make, does that solve that problem and is it tied to the whole contractor's yard? Um, you know, what we're trying to do there with that definition. Does that, any other questions come up for this? Or any other thoughts, Anthony or Millie?
No, I I think this looks good. I mean, I'm certainly walk or willing to hear feedback from staff.
Okay, so some feedback there. All right, and then I have the questions for contractors yard. Um, quickly, I wanted to read back to the contractor's yard for a second. I forwarded you an email that we got um from a resident. Just about changing the definition and I thought it was interesting, some of the points that she had made. Just about in terms of just making sure that we don't put in undue focus on the sales component of contractors yard and I. Because that's really not the the point of the contractor's yard is so that somebody can provide services and include labor and materials. But their main business is not the wholesale product, so I think that may be an important question to figure out. Like Amy, you mentioned the accessory use. Can the sales component, can they get a special permit for their sales component, should they want to grow? Because it sounds like Michelle's concern is. Are we preventing businesses from growing? By change of definition, so um I I have that somewhat written down and I think I can. Articulate that okay to staff if that's, if I'm capturing what our questions and, you know, things we want to verify are. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, and I'd like to try to see if Michelle has any examples of some that have grown, because I can think of all the landscapers. That I know and they're so busy in landscaping and they buy from wholesalers and they go out and do their job. They're not. I don't want to write a definition because we're thinking about what someone could do in the future where. It's two separate things, whether you're a retail or you're a service company. I think the two were getting confused.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot of our definitions are intermingled. Okay, anything else on this one?
Carrie, did you say you got an email from somebody who was questioning or asking for clarification on the definition of contractor's yard?
Um, she just submitted um what. She tried to just articulate what she thought the problem was and just how it may, I think I forwarded, I did it to everybody, I think. I can send it again to you.
Might have, it might have gotten lost in in other emails. I don't recall that one.
Okay, I'll I'll send that your way. She actually brought up two other things and I just want to make sure we close on this. Is there anything else for the bylaws that we need? Okay. I know it's eight oh four and I say eight o'clock, but give me, give me till eight ten, just so I can quickly mention. Um, but the, then the same email, just a couple, I actually have a question for the board, um and it was just asked in this email. For the common driveway and this was noted by one of the people, one of the public comments last time. That we now allow five lots and it seems like at one point it was at three lots. Does anybody know the history on that or remember why we changed? For Michelle, I don't know if you're still there, but if there's. Any history on the three to five lots?
It was before my time. But I know one thing that I've always wanted to update is. Our town versus other towns, we talk about five lots. And um other towns go by housing units. Because if you have five lots on a common driveway and they're all duplexes, now you've got ten houses. On one common driveway and that should be a street. Like, someone pointed out to me once before that we should update our bylaws instead of saying five lots, three lots. It should be housing units on a common driveway.
Oh, that's interesting.
Because you can exponentially grow it depending on what type of house you have there. And it can become a lot of units on a common driveway. But that's a totally different.
So can you show me where it's saying we can do up to five lots?
Yes, so that's, you won't find that in the bylaws. That'll be in our subdivision rules and regs and that's on the, if you go to the planning department page. Not planning board page, but the planning department page and click on um one of the sidebar links is for subdivisions and the common driveways are in there.
Right, but the subdivision isn't for an industrial lot, is it? I thought subdivisions were just for residential.
No, we're looking at a subdivision now in industrial, right?
Right, so, but the common driveway, so I was actually trying to find that. Is there, are there bylaws for a common driveway in an industrial? Use, because. I would think there would might be, need to be some different criteria for that than in a residential subdivision.
Huh, I don't know the answer to that.
Be a good question for Fred, but um there was a common driveway. That they used for um FedEx when they did the Amazon, but it was probably up to road specifications, so. But I know they, I want to think in our decision, it was before our time. That they said they were gonna break off of the FedEx driveway. Yes, they start for the first couple hundred feet and then break off and go up the hill.
Right, so that, and I guess the questions that I have on that is that what are the criteria for that? What are we looking at for the criteria on something like that? Because I couldn't find it.
Interesting, okay, so maybe we have a bunch, I mean, we don't have to solve it now, but those are, whenever we get that free. Period of time, those are certainly interesting questions. And one other thing she brought up was. About um just a centralized record keeping system and obviously staff isn't here to speak to it, but. Just keeping track of restrictions, it seemed like there were some properties that were, there was an application filed and there wasn't. The, we hadn't kept track of the restrictions on it somehow and a structure was approved and built and then what do you do? So. Um, that was just another question. And Millie, I'll forward this um this feedback to you. I just wanted to bring it up because I thought it was really um interesting that that this person took the time to send in that. Those different thoughts and they're really very interesting. I don't want to say her name without um her permission, but I thought it was really.
I wonder if that's something to ask Kathy too, like shouldn't a restriction come on a deed? So when they look at that piece of property, there should be a restriction on it that you can't build on it. So when it went in front of the board and they had a copy of the deed, there should have been a restriction. I don't know how it happened. I guess it's something we can ask Kathy too.
Um, the the last thing that I have and then we'll call this a day is um I was asked about a, doing a scenic road for Ridge Road. It looks like that is more application related. Have we ever done a scenic road? Otherwise, it's just planning board driven in the past? Or do the residents have to?
Not my time, has anyone come, but. We talk about walls and, but it would be interesting to figure it out. How did the scenic roads get on that list? Maybe Michelle knows.
Michelle, do you know how scenic roads have come about in the past? Is it always resident driven or can plan, is it planning board driven at times?
I don't understand your question.
Uh, just a a resident had asked me about a scenic road, he's doing Ridge Road as a scenic road. And it looks like, yeah.
So those are all done many, many years ago, before my time, you'd have to ask Kathy about it. They're mostly done for preservation of the stone walls.
All right, that was all that came in. I don't have any business, anything else from anyone? Nope, okay, great. Is there a motion to close? There was no adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second? All in favor, Anthony?
I.
Amy? Michelle? And Carrie's an I. Good night, everybody. Thanks so much.
Good night.